All right, welcome back from our break. We are now going to take up our next item on the agenda, which is 7.5, consideration of appointments to the Commercial Cannabis Ordinance Task Force. And this will be presented by Community Development, and we have Director Mary Darby here with us to present on that item.
Thank you so much. Again, my name is Mary Darby. I'm the CDD Director for the Community Development Department. And today, I am going to share with you the applications that I have received for consideration for the Commercial Cannabis Task Force Ad-Hoc Committee Team. That all goes together. Team is not a separate word. It just goes all together. Just wanted to share a little background with you. So on May 24th... It's over. On May 24th, I made a presentation before the Board of Supervisors illustrating where we are currently with the issues that we've been receiving. Issues and concerns as it relates to the existing cannabis, Commercial Cannabis Ordinance. On May 24th and, I'm sorry, May 25th and May 26th, staff, CDD staff, conducted cannabis workshops. The May 25th workshop was geared mostly towards the cannabis industry, and the May 26th workshop was geared more towards the community. We received 30 participants at the May 25th workshop and 21 attendees at the commercial workshop on May 26th. We had a total of 51 attendees at these workshops, and we received comment cards accordingly, based on their concerns or issues. We shared this workshop videos. We did about a five-minute clip of those workshops at the Board of Supervisors hearing on June the 7th. And at that time, the board encouraged staff to create the task force, an ad hoc committee, at the June 7th meeting. On June the 8th, the applications for the ad hoc committee was posted on our CDD website, as well as it was a part of this Granite Coast website as well, on June the 7th. At the hearing, the Board of Supervisors hearing, it was the composition for the task force was developed as follows. There were seven appointee positions, and that was the tribal government, Lake County Cannabis Alliance, the community members representing northeast, as well as northwest, community members representing southeast, as well as southwest, the Farm Bureau, the Ad Commissioner, as well as a cannabis industry member. To date, as of, well, as of June 20th, yesterday, I have received a total of 12 applications. And here it represents that I have not received any applications from a tribal government. We did reach out to tribal government through our cannabis officer, code enforcement officers, to solicit applications. I received one application from L- one application from LCCA, four applications from the northeast, northwest, as a community member, five applications from southeast, southwest, community member, one application from the Farm Bureau, I am holding the position for Ad Commissioner, and one application from the cannabis industry. This totals a number of 12 total. Applications came in in two different ways. It came in either through the chief administrative officer offices, through Johanna, or it came in through CDD with my name on it. I have researched all emails regarding applications that have been submitted, and what I have and I'm presenting today is what I have received. I wanted to highlight some of the applications that we have here in particular. So again, the tribal government, I have not received any applications. From LCCA, I received one application from Jennifer Smith, who address represents that she lives on the south area. I received five applications from the community members from northeast, northwest, and those members would be Lori Corella. I have highlighted some of the things from the applications, just to jot your memory. She shares positives and negatives of living next to a large grow. I received an application from Bobby Dutcher, which is a real estate person, as well as he served on the former, participated on the former ordinance, Commercial Cannabis Ordinance. I received an application for Donna Makowitz with Bluebird Recovery, and I received an application from Don Van Pelt, which is a part of the Lake County Winery Association. And I've also received two letters of recommendations recommending him to the board. Further, I received five applications from the southeast, southwest community. I received an application from Sabrina Andrus, who is an attorney. Jesse Kood, who represents the U.S. Cannabis and Hemp Research Center. Richard Lavell, which is an architect and deals with land use development. Roberta Lyons with the Red Bud Autobahn Society. She represents the south area. Erin McCarrick with LCCA Vice President, and also sits on the Clear Lake Planning Commission. I received an application from the Farm Bureau, from William West, from the north area, and the Ad Commissioner. I have added Catherine VanderWaal. And last category is the cannabis industry, and I received an application from a Christian Callahan, from the south area. I just put a note on my PowerPoint to state that all workshops that were presented on May 25th and May 26th that was held from the board or presented to the board will be uploaded. I just received that link, so that link will be uploaded as to the comments from the commercial cannabis websites, I mean workshops, and they will be uploaded to the website, CDD website. In terms of next steps, the Cannabis Program Manager will take this project on after the appointment from the staff. He will be responsible for scheduling meetings, discussing logistics, formulating goals for the task force, and following up with the Board of Supervisors. And that will complete my presentation.
Thank you, Director Darby.
Thank you.
Supervisor Paeska.
So I think Erin McCarrick would be one of the seats with the industry. I was just looking at her application because she...
May I speak? Is that okay?
Oh, sure.
Yes.
Okay, so in my presentation, I made no recommendations on who should sit where. I've only provided you with the applications that I have received. And further, what I've analyzed is where they're located, whether or not their applications came from the north side, or the south side, or what organization they presented.
Okay, so but she would be the second one from the industry that was submitted.
I see. Supervisor Sabatia.
Oh, and I, oh, sorry, I have one more.
Go ahead.
And then I asked you out there, but I did hear that Autumn Karsey submitted an application, and maybe she's on today and can explain where she submitted that, and we'll have a better understanding of what happened.
So unfortunately, I have not received an application for that particular individual, neither hand-delivered or through any digital platform. And I can always go back and check the digital platform as well, but I have not received an application from that individual.
All right, Supervisor Sabatia.
Yeah, I wanted to say, I wanted to say something similar that I had heard about some problems with getting the applications, whether with multiple locations of where it went. I don't, I don't know the explanation, though I'm ready to move forward with some of the names that are on there. But I am concerned that we have zero tribal government, and I know that the AB 52 and the understanding of those things is an important aspect of ensuring when we're reviewing and revising this ordinance that it's well-prepped with that in mind. And so I don't know how to handle that. I'll wait to hear from other supervisors, but that's definitely a concern for me, to move forward and not have that representation.
I reached out on Friday after the agenda was posted to some local government with an email. I received a response to the email, but it wasn't actually anything, like it wasn't the application or anything like that. So I know that there's interest, but the application wasn't submitted, and so I would need probably more time to garner that type of, yeah.
So, yeah, I agree. I just think you're going to need a little more time with the tribal governments, as you said. We've heard interest too, but haven't heard anybody say, "I'm going to get the application. I'm going to sign it."
Oh, your microphone, sorry.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you. Vice Chair. Yeah, so just a little more time is needed, but I would like to move forward and fill in the sixth position, because we've done that before with many different boards, building them through, Risk Reduction Authority being one of them, to get that started. So my thought would be to move forward today with the six, and then hit the ground running, hopefully, and get a tribal representative on there by our 28th meeting, if not the following meeting. So we're not slowing the momentum down that we have, because 12 applicants, that's a pretty good response to what we were asking for.
I think that would be a great idea.
Okay.
Supervisor Sabatia.
So I'm going to look at Ms. Grant as I make my statement here. I'm going to try to make it as connected to this as possible. In reviewing the applications, and this is not only related to this, but we have a request for have you committed a felony. And I know that AB 1008 was passed for employees, not for community members or anything like that. But the idea behind AB 1008 was to reduce discrimination and open up the opportunity to folks who may not be given that opportunity. There's a certain shame that comes along with saying yes to that question. We're dealing with an industry that we're kind of forgiving those kinds of things from the past. If it was related to possession charges or whatever charges from the past, and they're still allowed to get an application, but in our application for a use permit, but yet for this, it almost kind of maybe not, makes people not want to fill that part out and might prohibit us. And I'm not saying it's the reason for, but as I review our list and I review AB 1008, it doesn't, our list doesn't necessarily provide a diverse group, yes, in the categories that we created, but not a diverse group from just looking at our community itself. I don't, I can't fix anything, or I can't change anything, and I can't converse about what I'd like to see, but I'm just wondering if we can bring it back to discuss the application itself for a future agenda.
Yes, you certainly can bring the application back. I can tell you that a number of jurisdictions include that question, a number do not. And so that's an issue for your board. If you think that it discourages inclusivity, then you can certainly eliminate it. There are some suggestions I would have also in terms of fleshing out potential conflicts and time commitments, to make sure people understand what they're volunteering for, so it would be a good subject for discussion.
And so if I have consensus from the board, then I'll make sure that we bring that back on a future agenda, but no fact on today.
I'm going to agree with that, you know, the felony question, as it pertains to cannabis, you know, you know, those types of felonies. So, yeah, definitely.
Okay.
So I had a, so, yeah, I'm fine with that, too.
Thank you.
But I had another, just a question, real quick, because I was confused. When you mentioned Jesse Kued, you mentioned that he was a member, or he was a citizen of the...
UC system for cannabis and hemp.
Yeah, I'm confused about that, because it says, "I'm a member of the UC Cannabis Hemp and Research Center. I've attained, attended forums, webinars, et cetera." But then I have an email that specifies...
Well, I mean, if that's a candidate that we would be choosing, then maybe we would just have him come back in.
Okay.
Another meeting.
Cool, because I was confused as to how we would appoint him, with, is he going to be in the cannabis group, or is he going to be part of the citizens group, if that makes sense? I just, I just noticed that on there, so I was just, you know, asking the question. That's all. Yeah. Yeah, good.
Okay, so I have him identified as on the south side of the community member, but I just highlighted some of the, some of the items on the application itself.
Okay. Okay. All right. Yeah, no, I just was, didn't know if he was part of one or the other, but, okay. Any other questions or comments?
Can we just, can we look at the slides again that has the grouped, and maybe we can go one by one?
Thank you for asking that, because I was...
I'm going to knock one out at a time.
Would you like to see?
With the names?
With the names.
How they're grouped? So I think it makes sense to have Jennifer Smith with the LCCA.
Do we need to open this for public comment, so maybe we can just go ahead and do a motion to get these guys?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. Whatever the chair wants.
Before action, you want to open?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll go ahead and open it up for public, and then we'll come back to this later, right afterwards. You're right. Thank you for, thank you for that. So we'll go ahead and open this up before we discuss the list to the public, so they can, if there's any comments or questions about this item.
Ms. Darby, if we could see the list, it'll help me out a little bit, too, if you don't mind.
It's two different pages, so we're going to have to go one at a time.
If you pop it, so I can see the names associated with the different, I think, one more. Okay. All right, so I think, because it looks like it's a bunch of different ones, so William Wise with the Farm Bureau, he's a very, like, I would say, like, a very open-minded person. While he does represent the Farm Bureau, he and I have had some very good conversations. And while we kind of stand on different sides of different topics, we are always able to conversate, so I think he'd be a good person to have. Jennifer, being the president of the LCCA, is kind of a given for the LCCA. Erin, as opposed to the community member, in my mind, she would drop into that cannabis industry position. And although she is associated with the LCCA, she wears a lot of different hats. I think she has a pretty good understanding of the diversities, where Jennifer is really focused more on cannabis cultivation. Erin is a much more broad spectrum, really around retail, distro, and all the different encompassing aspects to it. Of course, nothing, and no means that against Ms. Callahan, but I think those two would really hold, and they participate in a lot of what we do, so it would seem like a hand in. Ad Commissioner, we only have one of those. Bobby Dutcher, I think, would be another good candidate. While, again, he and I don't always agree on everything, he's pretty well-rounded as far as the effects of the industry on people surrounding, whether it be environmentally, culturally, all the way down to economics. Tribes are left out, so, and that would leave me kind of open-ended with the fourth community, or number four, the second community member. I think having another person that would be associated with the hemp or cannabis, maybe that's not the right pick, because when I look at this, I see two cannabis people, two community members. You've got the Farm Bureau, and then tribal government, and the Ad Commissioner, to me, are icebreakers. Catherine's not against cannabis. It's not like, you know who. It's not like that.
So, wrap it up.
Anyways, I think that we're at a really good point. We're really narrowing it down. Maybe just also to remember focusing this committee on what they're doing, and not leaving it too open-ended, so you guys can get the results you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, anyone from the public in the chambers? And I'm not seeing, online, I can't see. Well, let me see. Yep, I have some hands up. So I'll start, so I'll come back and bring it to the public online, and so we'll start with Autumn Karsey. If you can unmute, and you have three minutes.
Hello, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name's Autumn Karsey. I actually did put in an application online through the digital submission. I'm in the cannabis industry and have been for many years. I started one of the first design-build firms in the cannabis space. I've worked in about, called Cultivo, I've worked in about 20 states and three countries developing cannabis facilities for our clients before selecting Lake County. And we have a couple farms, an application process, and a processing facility as well in the county. I'm a resident of Kelseyville, and I've worked with several planning departments in different jurisdictions all over the world to kind of help streamline the process of understanding cannabis facilities, labs, processing facilities, and cultivation and land use. So I think I would be an ideal candidate for this position, and I just wanted to throw my name in the hat in case it was missed.
Thank you.
Is there a way to find that application somewhere?
I was going to do another search on mine.
Okay.
And I've also been a keynote speaker at dozens and dozens of conferences on the sustainability of design-build for this space. And I'm happy to answer any questions about my background or experience.
Okay, we have, Johanna, you have your hand up, please? If you can unmute and respond, please, that would be helpful.
I think there might have been an issue with the link to the advisory board application, and I need to figure that out with IT. Because I received those, and I stopped receiving them on June 10th, so if it was after that, I haven't received it.
With that, I think we should move this item to next week, if we don't have all the applications in hand that people submitted in a timely manner.
So what I'll do is I'll let people comment out on this, and then we'll move forward and decide what we'll do from there. Thank you, Johanna, for that insight. And what we'll do is, thank you, Autumn. Next, we have Jennifer Smith. If you can unmute, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, this is Jennifer Smith. I first want to thank you for appointing an LCCA-designated seat to this. I think it's really important that we have the industry organization a part of this process. I think it's important that the LCCA will be able to gather information from all types of licensees across the entire county, and be able to really consolidate valuable information and streamline the process of input. And so I really want to recognize that and thank, thank the board for acknowledging that.
Thank you.
I'd like to also talk about some of the community members that I have had a personal experience with. Bobby Dutcher has been well-versed in the cannabis industries and needs. He's been a part of the evolution of these ordinances from, from the beginning, and he's been diligent in working with clients to make sure that they are purchasing properties that not only meet the ordinance guidelines and land use parts of the ordinance, but that also, you know, kind of fit in the neighborhood and make them good neighbors, so to speak. He's been very diligent about driving his clients to the right areas. I am concerned about the process of this, and knowing that this is to build an ordinance, this is not about whether we should have cannabis in the industry, and I think that that position needs to be restated, so that people don't think they can be on this board and stop cannabis. I think that that needs to be very, made very clear. I've also had great interactions with the Autobahn and Roberta Lyons. She toured our farm and was very insightful and very open to listening to what regulated cannabis looks like, and that it is not this big scary illegal farming that we see so much in the sheriff's logs. And I felt we had some good meetings, and she was receptive to what we were doing, and expressed her concerns, and was very aligned in making sure that we do what's right, but also that, recognizing that we're an ag commodity, and that when you get to these legal farms, you really realize that this is agriculture. Would love to have more cannabis representation on here. With that being said, obviously, I work hand-in-hand with Erin on a day-to-day basis on cannabis in the county as it is. Kristen is also very active in the cannabis industry. I am concerned that my initial application was not received, and I am grateful that my second application is in here now, but I am concerned that Autumn's was not. And so I do appreciate the fact that you're willing to continue this hearing if need be. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Dearam, if you can unmute, you have three minutes.
My name's Richard Dearam, cannabis developer and consultant, and real estate agent.
We're having a hard time hearing you, Richard.
Pardon me?
Yeah, we're having a hard time. I think there's some scuffling going on, we can't hear you over that, so maybe, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Yeah. And so I'd like most people on there, Jennifer Smith, obviously spectacular, Erin is awesome, Autumn's great, Bobby Dutcher's fantastic, Roberta Lyons is great. And I know that this is to build an ordinance that's going to make Lake County a place to come and grow. And I'm a little concerned with Mr. Van Pelt, as I've heard him speak in the Board of Supervisors against cannabis, and I think we don't need any animosity in this group. And with that, I'll let it go. Thank you.
Thank you. Phone 1447, if you can unmute, you have three minutes.
Hello. Hello, Chris Jennings, can you hear me?
There you go, we can hear you.
Perfect, yep, Chris Jennings over in Clear Lake. I am one that submitted an application yesterday. I emailed Mary directly, and I don't see my name on the list, or heard my name on the list, so maybe it's in the spam or junk or some other folder, but, yeah, I'd just like to throw my name in the hat as well, like Autumn, is pointing to do, and a few others that seem like they didn't make their, their application made it to you all. With that being said, I've been in Lake County in the cannabis industry for about 13 years now. Everyone wants to say they're a part of the first ordinance. The first ordinance was with Bob Masarali, when we had him as the CDD, and I was on that ad hoc to help shape and make the first cannabis ordinance. I had the first major use permit out of Clear Lake for cultivation, processing, distribution, a few other random items that I know the county used kind of as a template when they're making their CEQA initial use permit write-ups and everything. I have nursery, I own Lake Sederable Solutions, I'm probably the true definition of seed to sell. I am fully vertically integrated. I know policy very well. I, if I don't know policy, I'm not afraid to go out and find it. I have a good advisory team that I work with. Yeah, so I just want to put my name in the hat. I've been around for quite a while. I helped with Clear Lake cannabis policies, I'm on all their ad hoc committees, and I just believe, I know more than just cultivation, I know more than just, you know, retail and distro. I kind of know it all. I've been the forefront of all these licensing processes since it began, and I think I should be looked at and considered for the role.
Yes, go ahead.
And that's it.
Thank you.
I'm looking, thank you so much. I'm looking back at my emails. I did receive an email yesterday at 10:12 a.m. from a Chris Jennings, stating that he hopes that he's not too late. I am just seeing this email. However, our cutoff deadline date was June 15th, and in that, in my presentation originally, it did have a deadline date of June 15th. In other applications that have come in, besides the one, I'm not sure about Autumn Karsey, when she submitted hers, because I wasn't privileged to that information, but Jennifer Smith's application came in on June 16th, Christian Callahan's application came in on June 20th, and Erin's McCarrick application came in on June 13th.
Right. And I see Erin's got her hand up, so I'll go ahead and, Erin, if you can unmute, you have three minutes.
All right, I got the, hello, Erin McCarrick, Clear Lake. Just a quick, I didn't know how to designate what area to be considered for, but I was putting my name in for an industry spot. I also support maybe an extension, because Autumn and Chris and all the other candidates are also very good. Happy to serve in any capacity, and appreciate this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see phone 1447, if you can, for brevity, I'll let you unmute, and I think you raised your hand for a reason, so I'll go ahead and open it up for you for a second.
Oh, yeah, Chris Jennings again. I actually just spoke, but I just want to say, I hear what our CDD said as far as the cutoff date, but I also noticed timestamps of people that submitted their application yesterday as well, and made it to the, you know, to the list of potential candidates for this position. So I feel that I probably shouldn't be subjected to, I was too late, if other people were after the quote-unquote deadline, and they were not too late. So I think it'd be really good if we could extend this a week, and everyone who had an application issue, maybe hand in applications by hand, and as backup, and maybe get email confirmations, and, yeah.
Thank you.
A lot. More info, the better.
Right.
Better polling platform, the better. So I'm sorry, that's all.
Did you, let's see, I see Johanna's name up one more time, so I'm going to let her. And I'm going to close.
I just tried the link, and it works. And there's just one step that you have to verify your email, so if you didn't click that, it might have not gone through. That's all I have.
And so if you didn't verify your email, then it might not have been submitted, that's probably why. So that's when I just forwarded it to whoever to talk to him and then it got figured out. And so I just know that, her statement about June 10th, that there was other people that had, you know, dealt with that as well. So I'm not sure how it will go from there, but, but thank you. So is there?
Is that, are there more hands?
What's that?
That's it? Okay.
Yeah, there's no, no, no more. I closed public input as well.
So.
Go ahead.
So I don't know how we want to handle the Farm Bureau seat because although Will Weiss is a member of the Farm Bureau, he is not in a position to speak for the Farm Bureau. And so is this a seat that we want to open it up to the Farm Bureau's discretion, like their executive director? Or do we want to just select somebody that had it on their application? So that's a question for us.
Did you?
Because I had a conversation with Will about it yesterday. And, you know, he lives in Lakeport, so he feels like he's a community member, but he is, you know, he's in agriculture and he also participates with the Farm Bureau. So his perspective is not going to be the Farm Bureau's perspective.
Did you have an answer?
Yeah, my, my belief was that that was up to the Farm Bureau itself to make a decision on whether the director would be at the, in that position or whether the board will appoint somebody to that position. I kind of thought that because I saw Will's name on there, that that was the case. So I'm glad you brought that up because I, I was going to say, yes, by all means, let's put Will, because I agree with the comments that were made, that he's level-headed, he's an expert in the industry, he understands how it works. But I think it needs to be provided to the Farm Bureau and the Farm Bureau itself needs to make a decision on who the appointment is.
And that's.
If that does, hasn't already happened.
Well, that, that was what I was thinking too, which is why I called him to get clarity on everything, so.
So can I just reiterate?
Yes.
That these are only the applications that I have received. I'm not making any recommendations and I only took the highlights from their application so we could jog our memory about who the applicant is. So.
Yeah.
I'm not necessarily saying this is the Farm Bureau person. I'm saying that he submitted an application and in his application, he stated that he works with the Farm Bureau.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and one thing I'm realizing too is the email that I sent out Friday was still after the deadline, basically for, for the tribal member aspect of it as well. So that potentially could have went that way too. They wouldn't have, I don't know if they would technically count or not, but if someone would have submitted yesterday as opposed to, that, that would be the only submittal yet after the deadline. So I mean, just highlighting that because I didn't think about that when, when it was set through. I know that we did say 15th was the hard deadline, right? June 15th, right?
Well, yeah, I think we set the deadline for the 15th, so we'd have candidates to be able to discuss today. If we don't have somebody filling that spot, I mean, tribal still needs to get their applications in. But I think we, you know, originally, we should have been looking at those that had got their application in in a timely manner, but knowing that there might have been a glitch in the system, I think we need to push the deadline again.
Johanna, was there any applications submitted that you have that haven't been included here that were from the tribal, the tribal member status? If you can.
No, I haven't received any from the tribal governments.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So the, the applicants in question are for the cannabis industry seat. So do we want to just wait, push this all to next week or do we want to wait on that seat and the tribal seat and fill the others today?
I think we need to wait because we don't know if there was other applications that didn't go through. Maybe we need to republicize this. That's my thinking, but.
I agree. I agree because we might have a whole lot more for the other options as well because we're only hearing from the people that have made it to the meeting today or who have been able to hold on this long in the meeting to be able to get to this item. So I would agree and because of the fact that we're Tuesday today, we would basically be reopening it up for like 48 hours until Thursday, which is when things are due, I would suggest we have a longer time period than just two more days added on. And so that would probably mean July 12th is the next potential meeting. Which I think puts your timeline that you proposed to us, it pushes it back just a little
Nope, just holding it.
Just in case.
Yeah, I don't like pushing it off either, but it just sounds reasonable with the general questions about the application and then need to make it very clear that whatever you got to click, you got to verify your email so that goes through.
Or come on in and turn it.
Yeah, hand it in, in person. But I would agree with, with pushing it forward at this point after all the discussion.
Yeah, is there a way, I mean, this is just looking forward, next time we have to do this, some kind of automated response if you're going to, you know, where your application's been received, get the email kicked back to you.
It's an IT thing, but yes. Agreed. It's nice to get that confirmation that you've accomplished what you're trying to get done.
I'll just note that, you know, and I am in agreement, but I just note too that there's also, as there's always an agreement in, in the statement, there's always the argument for people that are, that want to be appointed now to say, well, that's, I submitted mine on time and I did my due diligence to send it to whoever to get in. So, but I'm just only stating that just because, so. But I, I do agree that if there was, on the 10th, there was no opportunity for people to be able to submit afterwards, then that's, yeah, we, there's still five more days that, you know, there was no opportunity for.
Well, it's, we have some really great applicants and it's the opportunity to make sure that we, we have the best selection.
Yeah. So I'm in agreement with that, with the consensus of the board regardless. I just note that just because it's, it's going to get brought up anyhow and I just, I hear those words in my head, so I just.
You too?
Yeah. So with that, I think, are we at that juncture where we're going to go ahead and go with what was stated or is there another option or? Yes, Mr. Darby?
I, I agree with the conversation of the board, however, I would like to recommend that right now, we have two locations in which the applications can come forth. I would like to request that they only come through one avenue and admin, I don't know if they, if you would like for them to all come through Johanna or if you want them to come through CDD, but I just, whichever point we take them through, I think it should be one, one location. And then in terms of receiving an automatic reply, I don't have that capability. I would have to, of course, go through IT. I don't know if Johanna and admin, if they have that capability, that once they receive the applications, they will get, receive an automatic response because now mine's is manual. So if I receive an application, I say, "Thank you for your application, we'll consider it and we'll meet you at the board for a final presentation." So I don't have that capability. I don't know if admin has that.
Johanna, I see your hand up.
Okay. And then the last thing is that we do have the application posted on our CDD website. It was a post-it the day after the Board of Supervisors meeting, which was on June the 8th. We can leave it there, that won't be a problem, but we can change the deadline date.
Johanna, I see you have your hand up.
Adobe Sign does send you an email back that you have signed the agreement and it gives you like an actual like PDF or you can open the agreement and see your agreement or application or whatever it is.
Thank you, Johanna.
So are we in agreement that it should go through admin office, not the CDD?
Isn't that status quo for applications for committees? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
All right. So it looks like we have a path forward and.
I have one last question.
What is that?
I'm sorry, and so my last question is in terms of presenting the applications before the board for a review and consideration, does the format in which I provide it work best?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it does work. That's why we wanted to, can we see the, the list again because it was, it worked really well.
If it's possible to have all of the categories with, I don't know how many more applications we'll receive, but if it's possible to have them all on one screen so that we can kind of, because we're probably going to move some people around into different categories, so being able to see that would be helpful, but not sure how, what that list will look like.
Tiny font.
So just one clarifying question because we said we had closed it off on a certain date and we got the applications after the date. So the applications that we have received to this point with the extension to the 12th, they don't have to resubmit again?
I would say, my recommendation would be no.
Okay, just want to make that very clear. Everybody who has submitted and we do have it in-house doesn't have to resubmit another one, so just want to make it very clear.
But if you submitted and your name was not in the.
Check.
Day, then please make sure to resubmit.
Yep.
And, and does that mean, and I'm glad you brought that up Supervisor Simon, if we're coming back here on the 12th with this, does that mean we want a deadline of no later than Wednesday, the 6th at 5:00 p.m. so that we're prepared to implement that on our Thursday submission for the agenda?
Yep.
That would be my recommendation in order to put the agenda together.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the date?
So Wednesday, the 6th by close of business at 5:00 p.m. July 6th, not just the 6th. Let me be more specific.
Thank you for doing that. All right, so are we all in agreement on the path forward? I think we are. And Director Darby, are you clear on what, is there any other questions?
No, I'm, I'm good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will close item 7.5.